Hey, you're good to go.
Gonna rerun it. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting in order for the City of Boardman Planning Commission Meeting of July 20, 2022. We please stand for the flag salute and hopefully somebody in the audience or fellow commissioner can lead us.
Sam.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we go ahead and do a roll call, please?
Mr. Charlie. Here. Commissioner Irons.
Here.
Commissioner Combs, I guess. Commissioner Slaughter.
Here.
Vice Chair Bracy. Mr. Tyke.
Yeah.
Chair Keane.
Here. I'm having a little bit of interference. I think maybe it's another camera, but do we have a quorum?
Yes, you have a quorum.
So the first thing on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. It looks like from the May 18th meeting as well as the June 15th. Did everybody get a chance to review the May 18th minutes? If so, I'd take a motion.
All right, I'd like to motion that we approve the minutes from May 18th, 2022, as well as June 15th, 2022, as presented.
Yeah, we have a motion from Commissioner Irons. I did not catch the second.
It was Commissioner Layton was the second.
Layton, okay. All those in favor, please do, I guess, say aye or raise your right hand.
Aye.
I believe the motion carries unanimously.
Just, there's a Scrivener's error in there. Debbie Brady's name is misspelled in the in the June meeting minutes. So I know I've been corrected in a couple places, but I don't think it got corrected in every place. So unless there's concern about that, we'll make that correction. Make sure we get her name stuff right.
So do you want a follow-up vote to include the edits?
No, we can treat it as a Scrivener's error. It's a name.
So again, I would take a motion as long as everybody's reviewed the June 15th meeting minutes.
Sam's motion actually was for both.
Was it for both?
Yes.
Okay, no, perfect. All right. Carla, can you do me a quick favor?
I can.
Can you email me the packet? It's not available on the website. And I never got it emailed to me. So could somebody forward it to me?
It's going to your city email, so I don't know why you're not getting those. So we'll have to fix that. So what is it you're missing? So we can get it to you.
The full packet, Carla. And I have never actually accessed the city email. From the very beginning, we set it up to where it was sent to my personal email directly. So I've never even accessed the city email.
That's the same with me. I couldn't get into the city one, so I don't have it either.
I've been wondering how many people aren't getting their email that way, so.
I got that password and all, but it was supposed to let me in the first time and all, but it never worked.
Okay, well, we'll have to work on that between this meeting and the next meeting. So I've been concerned that we're not connecting with everybody. So we'll have to figure out how to address that. We'll do that between now and next meeting. So Jacob, the findings should be on the website. If that's what you're hunting for.
I did find them, and I found those. My issue was in the packet looking for the public meeting protocol.
Okay.
Is what I was trying to say.
Just send the script from the last meeting. Yeah, she'll send it script from the last meeting.
Okay, and was it the script from the last meeting or the script we used to use previously? Because the script we used previously was actually pretty easy to follow.
Okay, I'm gonna have to go find that because I don't have that in my stuff. So we'll find that as well. So why don't we just take a minute and Jacob, let's just shift forward to the discussion items, just so we don't lose process because we can do that without the script, I think.
I'm trying to, just a second. I might be online here. I'm trying to steal it from an old packet.
Okay, so the next, well, if you can find it quickly, that would work.
Okay, I've got one in front of me, Carla.
Okay.
Okay.
She's fine.
Okay. And Carla, just to clarify, open the public hearing. This is for variance, VAR 22-02?
It is.
Okay. Alrighty, so at this point in time, if you guys are ready, I'd like to open public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear branch request, VAR 22-002. Wood from Woodhill Homes, the applicant and landowner, the subject property described as tax lot 904 of assessment from that four north 25 east 17 DB and his own residential. This request is to grant a variance to the side yard setback of more than 10%. Criteria are found in the Boardman Development Code, Chapter 5.1, variance specifically 5.1.4, Class C variances, and is being processed in a type three decision. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none. Is there any objections to the jurisdiction? Hearing none. Carla, can you take us through the staff report, please?
I can do that. So I'm gonna send you first to the map that's attached. The aerial view with the tax lots drawn on there. And of course, things have been built, so you know, it's an older aerial view. The subject property is tax lot 904. The this came to light when they were actually doing closing on tax lot 903. And so the addresses of those, 904 is 201 Southwest Eagle Court, 903 is 205 Southwest Eagle Court. So when they were doing closing on tax lot 903 or 205 Southwest Eagle Court, the side yard setback on 903 to the 904 side was too short. And so we've also been in the process of doing a replat, and that's a type two process. So that replat has gone out and has gone through the notice process. The staff report has been done and issued probably almost to the end of the appeal period now. And Ron McInnis is a surveyor of record. He did the foundation survey for the lender, the title company, for that closing process. And as we were on the phone and talking about 903 and the need to property line adjust the line between 903 and 904. And just so you understand, that line at the cul-de-sac is moving to the east just enough to make the house comply. And the house on 904 was not impacted. It still met the side yard setback for the internal side yard. But in my conversation with the surveyor, Mr. McInnis, he shared that he had identified in doing this work that the foundation survey for 904 was going to indicate that it didn't meet side yard setback for an external or a side yard. It is a corner lot. So that side yard is actually a 15-foot setback. Whereas on the other side, it's a seven-foot setback. The width at the front of the house was 13.1 feet. The width at the back of the house was 13.9 feet. Neither met or means what they identified on the site plan to be a 16-foot setback. And so we made the applicant or the builder aware of that. As they were moving towards closing on tax lot 94, the issue got elevated and they initiated this variance process. So now I'm kind of giving you the background of why we're here. I want to move back into the staff report itself. And for the reasons, so it's not a Class A variance because it's more than 10%. It's not a Class B variance because it doesn't fit the category for Class B variance, which makes it a Class C variance. If Class C variance comes here, there's a lot more discretion in a Class C variance. It's still somewhat problematic as we look at this. But at this point in time, it's hard to move a house and it's hard to move a street. So that's what we are. This is the proverbial rock in a hard place. Because foundation is made out of rock. So the purpose is to kind of, of this variance is to let us really take a look at these things that are kind of out of the norm or out of yeah, out of the norm, for lack of any better. The applicability, it does apply to an individual plot of lot. We are varying a standard. It does say for second applicability, an applicant who proposes to vary a specification standard for lots not yet created through a land vision process may not utilize the Class C variance procedural. The lot's already been created. A variance shall not be approved, which would vary the permitted uses or prohibited uses. We're not changing uses. Houses are allowed. We're not saying you can't. If the house is there, the house is built. And then variance to parking standards, and we're not varying parking standards. So it's really none of those things, and yet it's kind of those things. And so we'll get to the approval process and criteria. We are using a type three process. That's why it's here in front of you. We've done notice to the driving landowners. We've done published notice in the paper for the public hearing, and we're holding this public hearing tonight. So we are meeting those requirements of a type three process. It then says that the city shall approve or approve with conditions and application for a variance based on finding that all of the following criteria have been satisfied. So you know, the conclusion that I drew with staff is that the proposed variance is not materially detrimental to the code or applicable policies or standards. Probably, you know, some other things in here. It talks about topography. You know, the property is flat. It has no development impediments. The variance is not going to impact the proposed residential use. Physical and natural systems are not impacted by the use or this variance. And what's requested is the minimum needed to alleviate hardship. The difficulty in this is that the hardship is not supposed to have been self-imposed. And one could argue this is a self-imposed hardship because somewhere, somehow, the process failed. I'm new enough that I'm not quite sure where the process failed. This house was being built before I got here. The zoning permit was issued before I was the planning official. That's not to say somebody messed up before me, but somewhere along the way, somebody didn't confirm that this side yard setback was at least 15 feet and more appropriately, the 16 feet that they said they were going to do on the original plot plan for the house. My role tonight is not to point fingers or lay blame. We are where we are, and now we have to resolve the issue. So the hardship could be deemed to have been self-imposed. Because the standard is a 15-foot setback. Based on their zoning request, they clearly knew it was a 15-foot setback. They identified 16 feet is what they were working towards. So again, at the end of the day, it's 13.1 feet at the front of the house and it's 13.9 feet at the back of the house. The front of the house, no, excuse me, the back of the house, actually at 13.9 feet, qualified for Class A variance, could have been approved just with the planning official reviewing it and making that determination. It was within 10%. The further, the closer you get to the front yard, the more out of compliance it becomes and the harder it doesn't meet the standard for a Class A variance at 10%. So that's where we are. I am recommending approval. We have discussed this internally. We've been talking about because we know foundation surveys are being done at the end, it's part of the process that happens through the the closing process. The title company is looking for that as well as the lender. I think it's the lender that is pushing that predominantly. I think it's the lender who wants that. So not every home has a foundation survey when they get to this point. But we've been talking internally between myself and Glenn McIntyre, the building official, that maybe we should just require a foundation survey at the time that the foundation is ready for a foundation inspection. And again, that's been a conversation. We've not said, yes, that's what we're going to do. But we are going to be looking a lot more closely at string lines and other mechanisms to make sure that when we're doing that foundation inspection through the building permit process, that we're confirming that we're meeting setbacks as required in the code, but also as stated on the site plan. Because the site plan is not going to be approved if they haven't, if they can't show, if they haven't shown that they're going to meet the setbacks. So yeah, I think that's my staff report. I'm happy to entertain any questions. I know that the construction manager is in the audience tonight. So when he gets a testimony, he may be able to add to the story a little bit. I don't know if there's any more to add. And then awesome discussion.
So are you gonna, I guess, quick question and not really related to this, but are we gonna follow up on the discussion for the internal requirement of a foundation survey on every permit after the public hearing? Or is that an internal discussion for staff?
It's an internal discussion for staff. Once we make a decision, I will certainly let you guys know what we decide to do as part of my planning official update at a future meeting. But it's an internal process that, you know, it's my understanding. I was not here previously, but this is not the first time that this kind of issue has been before the planning commission. So Glenn and I have talked about how we don't want it to get here again. And if we need to take internal action to make sure that happens, we'll do that. I guess that's where I'm at, and I think that's where Glenn is at.
With the staff report, we move into the proponent's case portion of the hearing. Is there any proponents in the audience that'd like to say anything?
This will be your opportunity. You want to say anything? No? Okay.
Okay, hearing none. Moving to the proponent's case. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to say something from the proponent's case? I mean, opponent, I apologize. I can't read tonight. But hearing none, I think we can skip over the cross-examination aspect of tonight. Is there anything from any public agencies in the audience?
We've received nothing from any public agencies, and as Sam hasn't proved here, but other than that, there's still other folks in the audience.
No, I don't think we need to address any rebuttal evidence at this point. I'd go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and begin deliberation by the commission. Does anybody have any comments or further discussion?
Hi, I know we had the, it was a front yard setback a few months ago on, I believe the same road is like tax lot 912 or 913, right on the corner of the cul-de-sac there. And but I'm glad to hear that it's being resolved internally. And at least you guys have a plan.
Yeah. Yeah. We clearly need one, so.
Okay. My personal opinion is it sounds like the house is already in place and there's not much we can do about it now. And and I don't think it's necessarily in a location that's gonna adversely affect any neighbors or anybody. So I'm in favor of approval. Anyone else has anything else to say or for the comments, or we can make a motion?
Well, I move to approve it.
Do we have a second?
I'll move to approve the variance, VAR 22-02.
Was that a second gentleman's?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Making sure I follow in here.
Correct me if I get this wrong, but I believe we have a motion by Commissioner Layton to approve branch request 22-002. And we have a second from Commissioner Irons. Can we go ahead and do a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Layton. Hi. Commissioner Irons.
Yes.
Commissioner Slaughter.
Yep.
Commissioner Tyke.
Yes.
And Chair Keane.
Yes. So I believe motion passes unanimously.
Page zero, it's a last.
With two absent. Okay, so can go ahead and move into the discussion items, planning official report.
I don't, I didn't put anything official together today for the meeting. Wolf, Craig, and I continued to work through the stuff that was in Mary's office to kind of determine what decisions were previously made and to start a filing system to get all that organized and put away. At some point in time, these two over here are going to kick Rolfe and I out because we've been consuming the back meeting room for too much in the last several months. But we're getting close and it's been an interesting project. It's how we kind of understand what's happened in the past and try to get my hands on what's happening and what's going on. So we continue to make progress on that front. The Tidewater project, the Tidewater Community Living, they've met most of their conditions for us to sign the plat and move it on so that they can continue development. And I just want to talk a little bit about how Tidewater is a little bit different than a standard subdivision. Because this question's come up a couple of times. We've talked about it internally. The Development Code is really clear that before a plat can be signed for a partition or for a subdivision, that the infrastructure needs to be installed. And that's the infrastructure that's going to be dedicated back to the city. So that's the wet utilities. It's water, wastewater. It's the power in the ground. It might be the gas. If there's gas, they're proposing a neighborhood. Fiber, all of those things. And then the pavement as well as the curb. The gutter, kind of the gutter, the ribbon for me. What we allow them to wait on is sidewalk because we don't know where the house may be built. And we want to make sure that the sidewalk conforms and meets AD standards where the driveway is going to be and is reinforced appropriately where the driveway is going to be. So when all of that infrastructure is in and the pavement is on the ground, so when we initiate the signature on the plat. Tidewater is a little different because they negotiated doing a letter of credit. So the Development Code provides two other opportunities for them to begin actual construction of homes. So what developers want to get to is the building of the homes because that's where the money is. You know, they're spending a lot of money on infrastructure. They might spend a half a million dollars or more depending on the size of subdivision, and they don't have anything coming in until they start selling homes. That's where the revenue is. That's where the income is. And so they want to get that infrastructure in and get us to sign that plat as quickly as we can. But we're held by the Development Code that we don't sign that until the infrastructure is in and the pavement's on the ground. The code allows for two other opportunities. They can either do a development bond or they can do a letter of credit, and the code calls that out. And they don't have to complete the infrastructure if they provide us one of those financial mechanisms. And then they can start, they can do the infrastructure concurrently with building homes. Now, we're not going to issue an occupancy permit on a home or an apartment until the infrastructure is in and the road is there so people can get to that home. But they can be building all of that concurrently if they give us a letter of credit or if they give us that development bond. And so Tidewater Community Living agreed in their approval process to provide a letter of credit for that. And we're almost to the point where we should have, I'm hoping we have a fully executed letter of credit here shortly. And we'll be able to provide them that plat. So it will be, it will be a scenario that's different than what you're used to looking at. So when people ask those questions in the community, well, why are they building houses and the street's not in? That's the answer, is that they've chosen a different path. They're they're basically guaranteeing to us somewhere over $2 million. And if they don't put that infrastructure in, we can call that letter of credit and put that infrastructure in ourselves. So it's a little bit different development process. But I just wanted to share that because it's been a question that's come up several times in our internal conversations. And I guess I'm the new sheriff in town, and I said this, what the code says, and we're gonna do it that way. So I just wanted to share that with you. So you understood that, and questions came up about, well, that's not what Tidewater's doing with their development. Why is that? There is a specific reason, and it's a reason that's allowed in the code. So I just wanted to share that little piece. Houses and data centers are in the lifeblood right now, it seems like, of what's happening between planning and building. I bet you in my time here, I kind of lost track. Jackie told me the other day, I think we're at zoning permit like 76 for this year. And it's barely after the first of July, and I don't think we got to 70 last year. So, or if we did, just barely over 70 zoning permits. So lion's share of those are residential dwellings. In fact, in this year, it might be all residential dwellings. And because we're starting to give other applications different numbers, you've noticed the various had a VAR number. The replat had an R number. Subdivisions are going to have an S number. They're no longer in that zoning permit. So we're numbering them different, and so we'll be tracking them a little bit differently as we go forward. So when we say we've issued 76 zoning permits, that means that 76 permits for the development itself. We're not inflating that number by capturing a conditional use permit approval or a land provision approval and then the zoning permit for the actual dwelling. So we're going to start capturing those zoning permit numbers so we know what the actual structures are that are happening. So all the other things, the replats, the conditional use permits, most of those decisions may lead to a dwelling at some point in time, but they're not imminently tied to a dwelling. And if they're not, it may never trigger an action by the building department or the building official. So I want to figure out how we start counting and have a clear understanding of what we're triggering, and that's what's going to the building department. So we can figure out what those connections are and those linkages internally for kind of internal understanding and reporting of what's happening. So as I get a little more organized and we get a little further along, we'll generate probably some kind of an Excel spreadsheet. We'll be able to account for that and share with you, you know, more specifically what's happening. For now, it just kind of, it just kind of passes. For now, it just kind of, it just kind of passes in front of me. And Jackie, every once in a while says, this is what we've done, or we hit a milestone. It's like, okay, I'm thank you, that's why I'm feeling overwhelmed, but it's kind of where we are. I think those are the big things. We've initiated a Thursday morning development team meeting. It's myself, Rolfe, Karen, Rick, Kevin, Kennedy, and Mike Lee, the city's engineer. And we talk about any any number of things, all the projects that are happening in the city. So tomorrow we'll be meeting, we'll be talking about, we're gonna be talking about the sidewalk in Tuscany, and we're gonna be talking about just this kind of a variety of things that are happening. A sidewalk project on Columbia, various construction projects, Loop Road, the Loop Roads down off Coral Lane, as well as the Loop Roads at here at the Main Street interchange. So there's just a variety of things that we talk about in that development team meeting. And I I think it's helping, I know it's helping me, I really believe it's helping both, just to kind of help us get up to speed with all the things that are happening in the city and what's what's going on and kind of where we need to be expending our time and energy. I think that's probably all I would share this evening, Jacob. I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have about kind of where we're at and what's happening with with an activity. I the only other thing I will share is that we are at Lupa on two items. The record has finally been resolved in the First John Two Seventeen LLC and Jonathan Tolman versus the City of Wardman. And that is on the zoning permit that was issued for the UEC transmission line. UEC is an intervenor in that, so it is their legal counsel that is defending our permit that we issued. They're in a briefing schedule for that now, meaning Jonathan Tolman's attorney will submit the first brief and identify, in their mind, all the things we did wrong, and then we will UEC's attorney on our behalf and working with our land use attorney will 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 do a response, response brief to that that says, no, we didn't do those things wrong, and here's why, and this is what we did right. And then it'll then should go to oral argument in front of the Luba Board. It's made up of three individuals, and then we'll eventually issue a decision or a determination. Yeah. Um, well, no, but I think we need to.
We have to listen to you, so.
Oh, you know what? We don't, we have a quorum, and we're making no more decisions. So if you and Sam need to leave, we we can finish this. Yeah, I'm good, I'm good. You can do what you need to do. I think you're, I think you're leaving.
Oh, we got that, please.
Okay.
And you can shut that off.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, or we'll just leave it running.
No, I don't, I think between Jen and I, we can figure it out, okay? And we're not making any more decisions tonight, so we don't, we don't need to inform Sam if that's your concern, there's no more decisions, so. But if you can say that, that's perfect. The other Luba is the zoning permit that we just recently approved. You had an action on it back in May, and then the council had action on it in June. And that was for the zoning permit for the roads themselves in the same vicinity. And so right now, we're in the process where we have to submit the record to Luba. And then it will, well, I'm sure the record will be challenged, we'll have to correct it, and then we'll go through that same briefing schedule. So we won't have final decisions. Luba is anywhere from oh, six months on a good day to a year and a half, depending on what all happens and who all decides to participate in that. But because there were no other real participants in either of those decisions, there shouldn't be anybody else participating in the Luba process either. So Luba's not my favorite thing, and I worked really hard to avoid it at the county, but ended up there a couple of times. So it's not a fun place to be, but it is just part of life when you're in the planning field, so. Yeah.
I think you brought it with you, Carla. I I don't remember ever being on the Luba Board, and we bring Carla on, and here we are.
No, 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 you had the Luba Board, I'm not here. No, 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 no. No, 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 okay. So.
Only other thing, does that complete your official report, Carla?
It does.
I guess the only other thing on the agenda is, besides public comment, is future training topics?
Yeah, so I'm so I'm gonna hand these houses to people here, Jacob, from my city hall, right next to my city hall, and you've got a binder. And I'm gonna walk you through what's in it and then what my vision is to add to it. So never, when Christmas comes, I don't want to hear about not getting a gift, okay? I'm just saying.
Christmas is July.
Well, absolutely, it's Christmas in July, here you go. So what you've got in front of you is what's gonna become a planning commission manual. There's more things I want to add to it, but a couple of you brought up that you'd really like to have a little bit better understanding of your role, your responsibilities, and kind of how things happen. I've got a couple of other things in my personal collection at home that I want to bring in and add to this. And then we're gonna add some some things from the code, probably. But there are currently in this three documents. You want to take a look here? I didn't make one for you, but you can look. So there's, there's a couple of bright colored orange pieces of paper in there, and they separate the three documents that we started. So for those of you that are in the room, and we've not posted this to the website, Jacob or Regina, and we may, over time, we may add these things to the website, or at least provide links to them. All three of these things actually came off the DLCD website. I'm pretty selective when I head there, but these are three documents that I have. I have used all of these in my time at the county. And 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 they're, it's it's just good standard stock kind of stuff. But head to the back one first, the third one. And and I'll do this, and I will try to, as I as I talk about what's in the binder, I'll try to just infuse a little bit of kind of planning one-on-one and have you guys kind of get a sense of what's in here, and I might touch on something she hadn't heard before, and if it's repetitive, I apologize. But the the third thing in the book is a brochure that the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development did years ago. And I don't know what version this is or how how current this is, this particular brochure. But it's found on their website, they've they've at least amended it, so it's in a PDF page format. It used to actually be in a folded brochure that you could, that they made available, but they don't do that anymore. But it talks about the the nineteen planning goals. And we're, we all are charged with fulfilling the goals. But once you've adopted a local comprehensive plan and a local development code, technically, when you're processing an application, for most actions, you don't have to deal with the goals directly, because you've already done that in your adopted comprehensive plan and in your adopted development code. So it's always good to know what the goals are. When I first started as a planner, I started out in a flunky position. And I was working for Tamara Maddott, who was at Morrell County at the time. She left Morrell County, went back to Umatilla County, was there for a long time, and now she's actually back in Morrell County. But she would, she would rattle off statute and goal and rule, and I'm like, I'm never gonna get that. And about three, four, five years later, I find myself rattling off statute and rule and goals. So it's not that you can't learn this, and it can't become a part of your vernacular. But just to be clear, it doesn't need to become a part of your vernacular. You need to make sure that I don't get stuck in planner speak for your benefit as well as the participants and the audience benefit. You need to make sure that we're using language that is common enough that the people who are the public that are trying to participate in the process can understand the conversation we're having. So even though I sometimes fall into the habit of saying, well, that's in goal eleven, I have to remember, most people don't know what goal eleven is. So I I hopefully that helps you understand what my expectations of you all are. Yeah, over time, you you'll pick these things up. I I know Jacob knows it all, so he keeps telling me that anyway. But this particular document does talk about each of the goals, it gives a summary of each of those goals. The fact that we're meeting tonight, we're complying with goal one, it's the citizen involvement goal. Goal two is really kind of the goal that says, this is how we land use plan. And it talks about some things pretty specifically, it's a pretty long goal. When you get into the rule online, it's very involved. Goal three and goal four are not city goals, because it's the agricultural lands goal and forest lands goal. So I know a lot about goal three and four, because I spent eighteen years with Morrell County. I'm not gonna use goal three and goal four in this role here. It's just, it's just a difference between urban thing and rural thing.
Those coming up, when you start talking about urban brawl and like expanding the urban growth boundary and whatnot, Carla? Does goal three and four apply in those circumstances?
It can, and and I, you know, I shouldn't be so old and say goal three and goal four are not urban goals, because there are certainly places, communities who are at the forest edge certainly deal with goal four. And communities like Ione and Lexington certainly have more interaction with goal three than Wardman would. But yes, when you start looking at doing an urban growth boundary expansion, and that's work under goal fourteen, because that's the urbanization goal, you do have do, well, they amended the rule, and so there's actually provisions where you you have to meet the provisions in the urbanization rule, which is in lieu of doing a goal three or goal four exception. So they tried to make the urbanization process easier and take that goal three exception out of it, because there's a really high bar. But they still make you analyze the land. And unless there's absolutely no other way, they will push you onto the poorest farmland before they allow you to expand into the best farmland. So there is still a hierarchy that's used, it's just done a little a little bit differently. Does that answer your question, Jacob? So in the in the brochure, it jumps, but I'm gonna skip over a page and examine this word, goals five, six, and seven. Goals five, six, and seven are the natural resources goals. Goal five prevent, talks about natural resources, scenic and historic areas and open spaces. Goal six is air, water, and land resources quality, and goal seven is natural hazards. I think goal eight is actually on the next page, it kind of mixes up. Goal eight is a recreational goal. Goal nine is all about economic development. Do you have enough employment lands? The economic goal, goal nine is what says, do you have enough lands that are zoned for commercial and industrial purposes? And we need to do that inventory and ordment at some point in time. And we need to assure that we do it, if we don't, that we need to figure out where we're gonna gain them at. Goal ten is kind of the companion goal, because it's a housing goal. And it's the goal that says, do you have enough available land for your twenty-year housing needs? And when you look at the map at Wardman, we've got a circle and a half and a couple of other small circles. And it's like, those circles need to go away, because we need to put houses where those circles are. But you need to have willing landowners. I think we could say, have the same argument about our residential or commercial and industrial land, too. We have a couple of landowners who, we need to motivate them to allow that land to develop so that we can have residential, so we can have commercial and industrial development in our community. So goal nine and goal ten kind of work hand in hand. Eleven is public facilities, so that's the water, the wastewater, it's the gas line, it's the it's the roads. But it's also police service, school service, health services. Do you have those things? Those are all kinds of public facilities. So do we have an ambulance? Do we have fire truck? Do we have a police car? And do we have people that can drive those and use them and deliver the services necessary? Goal twelve is transportation, which could be a public facility goal. But but in Oregon, it's been carved out specifically for us to look at transportation. The city has a transportation system plan, which is a part of its comprehensive plan. We also have a Main Street interchange area management plan, we have a quarter of moral interchange area management plan. And we could end up with other, like in Morrell County, there's actually a corridor plan for the corridor. It's a joint, it's a two-county, two-city open-up plan for Highway seven thirty between Hurigan and Umatilla. And if you ever used to drive that, you used to see the sign up that said, this is a safety corridor. And we were compelled to do the refinement plan because it was a safety corridor because of the number of accidents. And then it compelled us to identify what we needed to do to improve the safety so that they can remove that safety corridor designation, and we were successful in that. They eventually removed that designation. So transportation, there's a lot of compartments and pieces to transportation. When you want to change the development code, when you want to change the zoning on something, when you want to put in a large industrial or commercial use, or even a very large residential neighborhood, you sometimes are compelled to do a traffic impact study to determine that what you're proposing can be that the traffic impacts will not create a detriment to the transportation system. And if it does, then what can you do to mitigate it? Do you need to put in a turn lane? Do you need to put in a, do you need to put in calming devices? Is it gonna trigger the need for a roundabout or a or a signal? Those are the things that we look at in goal twelve. Goal thirteen is a waste of time. Yep, I said that out loud. It is the energy conservation goal. And my frustration for the last fifteen years working for Morrell County is that the Department of Land Conservation and Development, well, actually, the Land Conservation Development Commission advocated their role under goal thirteen. And they let the Oregon Department of Energy take that on. And I'm glad we had Barry Byler preserve on FSEC for as long as we did, because he really advocated for energy to be done right. But goal thirteen was, the goals were written in the nineteen seventies. And I know some of you are old enough to know what happened in the nineteen seventies. I remember it clearly, there were gas lines, and there wasn't, gas prices were one sky high. We had this interesting conversation earlier today about the financial crash that happened after the energy crisis in the eighties. So goal thirteen is an energy conservation goal, and it's really a worthless goal today. There are some counties and probably some cities who, when they adopted their comprehensive plan, had some foresight and talked about things like renewable energy and energy generation as part of their goal fourteen narrative. And they're probably lucky today they did, because if they didn't, they are confined by what the goal says. And it is simply an energy conservation goal. So that's why I said it's a waste of time. Goal fourteen is the urbanization goal. That's a goal that really guides how cities grow. And 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 then how we, within the urban growth, the the city limits and the urban growth boundary, how we manage that growth. We can't just assume that if we're gonna add more land to the urban growth area, that it's all gonna be for houses. We also need to look at new land for commercial and industrial uses as well. So those fourteen goals are the statewide goals. There are five more, and don't ask me to quote them, because I can't. I don't know, because they don't apply here. One of them is a land agreement way goal, and the other four are coastal goals. They apply, or three are coastal goals. No, four are coastal goals. And they don't apply to this coast, they apply to that coast. So it's all about estuaries and the the territorial sea that two hundred miles it goes out, the state of Oregon has influence over. It would be interesting to do coastal planning, but that's as far as I'd ever taken it, it would be interesting. So anyway, that's a little bit about the fourteen statewide planning goals. And what I would say is, the city does have an adopted comprehensive plan. I haven't gotten into it really in depth. I know that over time, you guys have done some updates to some of the chapters in in the in the comprehensive plan. But the comprehensive plan mirrors what I just went through. It talks about goal one, it talks about goal two. It's not gonna talk a lot about goal three or goal four, probably not at all about four, it probably talks a little bit about goal three. It's gonna talk about those natural hazards goals, those economic and growth goals. You know, at some point in time, we should dust, take out the comprehensive plan, dust it off, and review it, and make sure we understand it and understand how it gets used. Fairly soon, fairly soon, we'll be doing, and hopefully, an update to the interchange area management plan for the Main Street interchange. And we'll see how, we'll see how the IMP affects the TSP, which will affect goal twelve in the comprehensive plan. So you'll begin to see how some of these documents interact a little bit and how they work together. So I don't want to do a deep dive, no need to deeper dive, but I just wanted to share. So, I don't wanna do a deep dive, no need to deeper dive, but I just wanted to share with you what's in there. The other two documents, again, are generated by, um, the Department of Land Conservation and Development and used by them. The first one in the book has been around forever, I mean, it's literally, this document has been around a really long time. It was updated in two thousand and seven, but it's still just a good, um, kind of how we do things. Um, document. It takes you through, it's short and sweet, there's a page on, um, a number of things. You know, there's an introduction, there's an overview of land planning, what kind of documents there might be, what typical actions are, variances, something we did tonight. Um, conditional use permits, so it's really just kind of an overview. And so if you're kind of like, well, what am I really doing, this might help. The second one is actually a training document that D L C D uses in cooperation with a number of, um, consultants and others who go around the state and provide trainings to, um, planning commissions. And I, I drew this one in here as well, because it kind of, it, it, it looks a plan from a, a little bit different perspective. It starts off with an introduction plan. Do you wanna see what we're gonna do next to? I didn't make either of you guys one, but. But then it, it, it gives some history of land use, and there's some good history in here. Um, it talks a little bit about what things happen, uh, what things are, what is, it defines what a comprehensive plan is. It talks about Luba, it talks about how you amend a plan, um, it talks about planning values. It's got roles and responsibilities in here, so it kind of defines my role, uh, the council's role, your role. Um, and then it talks a little bit about the planning commission chair. Um, but, you know, it's just, it just kind of gives you some of that background. And what I would, um, propose is that at some future meeting, um, maybe July, or where in July, maybe August or September, we could take one or the other of those, and just spend a little bit of time to kind of run through it, you know? Have you guys read it, kind of get an understanding of it, and we do a little Q and A, and I can hit the highlights, just to kind of answer some of those questions about what is my role, are we doing it right, and, and confirm that. So I, again, I don't wanna do a much deeper dive tonight, so I just wanted to give you an introduction. And like I said, we'll continue to add to this, but when we add to it, we'll make sure it's got an orange sheet of paper, or some other bright color, and we'll freehold it, so you can take it home and just sort of write in your book however you wanna manage it. Uh, these are your books for you to keep. You're welcome. I'm happy to answer any questions. I just threw an awful lot at you, and, and here's something I would say. Actually, my first introduction to land use planning was right where you are. In fact, my first introduction to land use planning was sitting right out here. Uh, I'm a homeowner, I live in Umatilla. Uh, the city had an applicant who came in and wanted to subdivide the property behind me, and, um, we got the notice in the mail, and I'm looking at it, and I'm like, I don't even know what this means. I called my dad. Planning's in my blood, because my dad actually sat on over the middle of Free Water and the Umatilla County Planning Commissions back in the day when they went through acknowledgement. So that was in the seventies and into the early eighties. And I called my dad, and I said, what does this mean? And he actually came to my home, and we sat down, and we looked at it, and we talked about it. And I got the nerve to go to the planning commission meeting and stand up and say, I have concerns. And I had no idea what to say or how to say it, and I stumbled through. And I said, you cannot let this development happen without improvements to power line road. And they didn't listen to me. And to this day, there have not been improvements made to power line road. That's a story for another day. But what happened is because I took that, I took that, and I went to the planning commission, and I stood there. The city manager at the time, I think was Martin Davis, and the planning consultant I used was Leslie Howard. And after that was all concluded, because I not only testified in front of the planning commission, I went to the city council, when whatever had happened went there. And I said, you cannot let this happen unless you make them a power line road. They asked me to do what you're doing, and I stood on the planning commission, and I did that for several years. And this was my aha moment, as a planning commission member. It was the night I realized that there was a difference between a conditional use permit and conditions of approval. A conditional use permit is a permit that's issued, and it may have, and probably will have, conditions of approval. But any other permit that's issued can also have conditions of approval. We didn't apply any conditions of approval tonight to the approval that we did. But if you think back to last month, when we did the replat, there was a condition of approval that said they had to do a final plat. That's the condition of approval. And that's not a conditional use permit, and that was my aha moment. And I succumb back to that, because this is hard. What you're doing is hard work, it's a, it's, it's intricate, and it's, it's, you know, when you start looking at the comprehensive plan, the transportation system plan, and the I A M P, you've got two of those. And then we've got a, got a downtown development plan, I recently become aware of, and we've got, there's all these things, and they all interplay, and it's some, my job is to make it easy for you to understand what's applicable, and tell you what those standards are, and do an analysis of whether or not those standards have been met, to make your job easier. But when we get to those conditions of approval, that's my recommendation to you. Those are your conditions to apply. Oh, I'll stop there.
Oh, we can go all night, we can go all.
Nah, not all night. I'm one minute to eight, I get it in under an hour.
We're almost, almost at home. Um, is there any public comment tonight?
Did you find a job? Got a job, okay, good.
Uh, any additional comments from fellow commissioners? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Uh, thanks to everyone. I guess, uh, next meeting is, uh, August seventeenth at seven o'clock.
Yeah, at this point in time, we do not have an agenda item, I mean, we don't have an action item. Um, but I'm gonna be in town as far as I know, so we can go ahead and meet. And, uh, if nothing else comes up, we'll just say, dieted one of the training topics. And then we can also, next month, start generating, I know Regna and I talked today on the phone, a little bit about, talk about what needs to happen with development, other than the updates to it. So, uh, those would be the two things I would quite put on the agenda for August.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.